The T.C. Freeze, located in Monazuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded pork tenderloins, famous homemade pony sauce, and don't forget our roasted chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten-thirty to nine-thirty. To place an order, call seven-six-five-two-four-five-two-eight-eight-seven. We appreciate your business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks for coming. All right. We have minutes, three sets of minutes to approve.
Some of them.
September fifth and eighteenth, and then March fourth, last minute.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for September fifth, twenty-twenty-three, September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and March fourth, twenty-four.
And I was here on all those, so I'll second that.
Oh, fair try. As was I. You did everything. You did it out of the yell that you know how I am. All right. Then we have payroll. Two of them won the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents, then the Union Hospital Security, or three-thousand-one-hundred-six dollars and ten cents.
I make a motion to approve payroll, won the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents, and won the Union Hospital for three-thousand-one-hundred-six-ten.
And I'll second that.
All fair try. All right, then we acknowledge received payroll claims accounts payable report, and that's an one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
I make a motion, we acknowledge received payroll claims, the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-five-seventy-two ninety-five.
I'll second that.
All fair try. Okay. Do you have any other cycle checks? Okay. New business, go ahead and do these two things I have before I forget and be so proud of myself, we just remember to get them done. We have a agreement to sign for Westler with this regional sewer project. These two things were submitted by Cindy Todd from partnership Park County, Economic Development. As you're aware, we have working on a sewer project connecting northern part of the county to Trickerland State Park, Trickerland Elementary, and then pick up Bloomingdale and Marshall, and then bring that sewage to Rockville for treatment. So this is an agreement to allow Westler Engineering to use our DSI.
I included it because I forgot to put it on the agenda.
No, not a problem. So I'm gonna make the motion that we authorize Westler Engineering to have access to the DSI as requested by Cindy Todd.
And I'll second that.
All fair try.
Oh, and we looked all through that sign.
Yes.
Nick had looked it over before he went on vacation.
All these people going on vacation, what's up with that? Missing all the opportunity to be out working and doing stuff. You're trying to sneak out, I'm watching you, until you go in for the door.
How common is it for sewage to be moved that distance for treatment? Is that common?
Mm-hmm. Especially in this case, now they got away from that for a while because the DNR and IDN were encouraging small entities like that to create their own wastewater treatment instead of having larger wastewater treatment. Now they even going the other way because they found them to be unsustainable. They can't keep licensed people in place, they can't afford to keep licensed people in place. And he's well aware of that too, that's what they do, well aware that it's better to improve the activities of a larger unit to handle more waste, you got one place for effluent to be handled and that kind of thing, so let's work it back to it. It will actually, it's actually a win-win if it gets accomplished. It's gonna be expensive, about fifty million is what it's gonna cost to get the project done. It will absolutely save Bloomingdale and Marshall, which right now are in jeopardy because you got those little towns, little houses squeezed together with little yards, and they all got their own septic system. Imagine they all had wells at one time, and how bad that was. So water is taken care of first. We had water systems for years, so we'd always have fresh clean water coming in, but you're still living on the septic. But if one of those fails now with the new codes, it's not large enough to put a septic system in. So your only option now is to put a tank in there, take it in the yard, and have it come pumped out every couple of weeks, or however often you have to have, it's really expensive. And that's one of the selling points when you get ready to talk to people, which this meeting will be all we're gonna talk about, is to get them to understand that your system is gonna fail in twenty years, it's gonna happen, I mean, it can't go on forever. And at that point, you won't have the option of replacing it with that. So, but the cost should be as, should be similar to you being paying sewage fees as opposed to the way you get a bed hunk of a few thousand bucks to put a new septic system in, so it should even out. This is getting, getting over that, how can that surprise you? You're gonna have to come up with monthly bills, you're gonna have monthly bills. But really, it's the same as putting that much money away every month to pay for the septic system that's gonna fail at some point anyway, right? That's always a hard sale because you never think it's gonna happen. You know, mine's gonna last forever, I won't have to ever replace my septic, but anyway, it's just the way it works. Okay, and the other part that we have is on that sewer system, we'll need to have a public meeting at some point, and so Cindy has requested using the fairgrounds to have that meeting at the community building. And it would be sometime in April or May, that is yet to be determined. So they just need our authorization, and they can work out the date with the fair board as when that would be a feasible thing to do, so I'd make the motion also that we authorize the redevelopment and partnership Park County to use the facilities at the fairgrounds to hold the regional sewer information meeting.
And I'll second that.
All fair try. Okay, thanks. Now we'll get on to stuff on our agenda here. We have a request here from the Monazuma Library, and it says our library board, Kim Crowder, has completed her third term on the Monazuma Pala Beat Library Board Trustees, and Mrs. Crowder has expressed her willingness to serve her fourth term, as there are four terms of four years each allowed. She is the reserve county president, works for the Community Action Program, encloses her certificate of appointment form, and would we please complete the form and return it to the library, so.
If you'll sign it, I'll fill in the date.
Okay, so we have a request to appoint Kim Crowder to the Monazuma Library Board.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All fair try. All right, that's not me, that's the citizen who's gonna appoint you.
Okay. Do you need two of them signed?
No, just the one.
Okay. We are the governing body, okay.
I'll fill in the date, no, thanks for that.
Okay. All right. Next, we have a MOU of valid professional community health center. And that's just saying that they'll provide care and cheer for all workers, compensation injuries. Do we know if Nick has looked at this?
I think it was also sent to him, I can't remember. No, he sent me this.
Oh, he sent that?
Mm-hmm. He sent me this and asked the U.S. line.
Okay, good enough then. All right, so we need a motion in to approve the MOU with valid professional in Park County to serve as a workman's compensation injuries and notices.
So I'll make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding for the valid professionals' community health center.
And I'll second that.
All fair try. We're required by law to designate a medical facility to take care of our workman's compensation activity. Don't know why they just can't put a Band-Aid on and let it go, but oh. And then, does that feel bad?
Okay, I'll do that. The office tomorrow.
All right. Then we have a grant request from Jason McCarter. So this is a pass-through grant, actually, this has kind of already been done, so it's kind of the cart in front of the horse on this. He apparently was unaware that it had to go through the process, that's the way I understand it. Jason, you were at the meeting there, I guess he was unaware that you need to go through the process of having us and the council approve a grant request. He's already got the grant, and I think the council's already approved it, so we just have to approve the, is seeking that grant. Sorry, I made the motion that we authorize Jason to seek that grant, to, as a pass-through grant, to pay for the Rice Twenty-Four Conference.
And I'll second that.
All fair try.
And Jim, you're the only one.
Okay. And I always feel, I guess it's just, I feel I need to reiterate it to the news or whoever is noticing that all entities for the county who are seeking grants in the name of the county are required to come to the commissioners, this is required by state law now, to come for the commissioners to get approval to allow them to seek a grant, only because the counties, and it makes sense, need to know who is seeking what grants from whom, because we don't want two entities competing for the same grant, you would have to pick which one you want to wear, so that's the purpose of that whole thing. I don't know that we've ever had a conflict of two entities seeking the same grant, but we could have a USBA or a OCA at some point. Okay. Old business, we just have a knowledge of them here, you know, the ongoing claim.
There was a lawsuit, and it was where our ambulance went to Vermillion County.
And they missed the turn, and is that the one where they were delaying getting there?
Well, it looks like that our insurance company settled and it was gonna pay him some money.
Okay.
I think I gave you a copy of, from the attorney and that, but I just wanted you guys to see.
I think that was, it was, it was an error or confusion as the address of how to get to the place, it took longer than they felt it should have taken to get to the place, and when they got that, and Vermillion County, I think as well, then they felt that added to the issue versus.
They had, their ambulance was out, and they called ours to help.
Yep. Okay.
Katie said she would be here with the information, but she's not here.
Okay.
I can tell you a little bit about.
Talking about Katie?
Mm-hmm, Katie Potter.
Yeah. They're changing rules on mobile homes.
That we can, the county can decide not to tax them as personal property.
Right.
To put them on the real estate.
Right.
And the state is leaving it up to each county on what they wanna do, but she was supposed to have more information.
Yeah, and we should wait for a recommendation from her. I would think the understanding would be if it's personal property.
I think she wanted to explain it to you before they decide.
You have an ever-depreciating amount of value there, so taxes are always going down on those as opposed to real estate where taxes are always going up.
But they're hard to collect.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Especially out to the lake.
Yeah.
People will call and say, why don't I have taxes on my mobile home because it's not in their name, and they said, when did you buy it? Go, five years ago, but they never came in to transfer the title.
Yep, I got a friend in Florida going through that same fight with the mobile homes in their area right now.
But they go through the B and V for their mobile homes.
Okay. Interesting. All right. That's just the DIS agreement we already approved. Anybody else? Jason?
Oh, I just have one thing. I started the process to cancel our medical contract with Inmate Medical.
And you said they were actually down just a handful of departments so that they were operating within?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
They're down in just a few counties in the state. So anyways, I brought the new contract, I emailed to you guys Friday also, so I don't know what you wanna do with Nick not being here, but
Has he seen it?
To get it signed, because we're scheduled to start May first.
Has he seen it yet?
I don't know if he's.
If you're scheduled to make first.
I said it Friday, and I think he was.
He's on vacation.
On vacation.
I'd really hesitate to sign it until he's looked at it, because I read, I read pretty well through that, it's just legalese after legalese, after legalese, and I'd hate to do something.
We have time to do it next meeting.
And if that's the case, we'll do that.
So you guys all have a copy to?
Yeah, I got the email on.
I did, I did.
Bruce, you want this copy?
No, I don't need it. See, as long as Nick looks at it, that's.
It's good bedtime reading if you need to.
Yeah. It's about twenty pages long.
It is, it's just huge.
Oh.
It's whereas, and I've never seen a contract that was whereas, 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 therefore, in a contract situation, okay, order says yeah, but not in a contract situation, so that was kind of unique, that's why I started going into it. Big bucks, it's like one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, it's, they go up every year, it's getting.
And it's for the medical care, we are required to give reasonable care to our inmates, people that we are holding, and so this is a service that would do that, and they were looking at twenty-five hours a week for a nurse.
Twenty-five hours?
Yeah. So I went through it pretty well, but I'm no attorney, so if you're good for another meeting, let's wait till Nick has a chance to look at it.
Yeah, next meeting should be fine, then. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other departments here for anything? All right, just go ahead and skip around here some, you guys got anything?
Do you want to let me down?
Okay, that's good. That's not a problem.
That's all right?
It's just glad, just glad to see you here, that's fine.
Absolutely.
On, so the commissioners know, remember the CBC paid for a traffic count study for the Bridge Festival time, they have that, in fact, they've had it for some time, but we've not had a chance with CBC. But at our next meeting, which will be
April first.
No, I mean our next meeting, I mean next CBC meeting. The next CBC meeting is April twenty-fourth. They are gonna come and present that to us, so if you guys wanna come join in, hear the presentation.
It's April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth at Bridge Sixty-One. You know what that is? They're putting our next IGA, or Kirby Foods now, I guess.
So you don't have any more information other than that, you still don't know about it yet, or?
No, that's what, so we're gonna get it, we're gonna get that on the twenty-fourth, yeah. So they've got, they got the reports all done, and I already told her that I'm sure the CBC will pay for a follow-up. I wanna see this year if people learn from last year that if you wanna get to the east side, you can't come in from the west side, you need to go around Fifty-Nine and come in that way.
What was the time limit?
Six o'clock. And also wanna invite anyone, actually, anyone's invited, we have our annual meeting, CBC annual meeting on the eleventh at six o'clock at the Bridge Sixty-One also, that's with CBC, just to go through what we do, how we do, and how well it's going, and it's remarkable, I mean, we that marketing group on the CBC has done a remarkable job. We are just behind the Indiana, behind the state on contacts and numbers. We are so far ahead of contacts and follow-ups and clicks. They just do Courtney Cook, Doug Weiss, I just do a great job with our marketing committee and what they do, and so.
That's April eleventh?
April eleventh, yep.
And that's the annual meeting?
Yes, the annual meeting, yeah.
Didn't we just have an annual meeting?
No, that'd be it.
Seems like it.
Well, as you get older, John, you're circle back.
I'm starting to figure that out, yeah.
After a while, you don't even need to go to bed, just stay up and be, be next week tomorrow.
About there too.
Okay. All right. Anybody else got anything? Sir, is something for you?
Uh, Jim, I'm less than very, we talked on the phone.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yes. I, I'm not here for a debate, I'm not here for confrontation, I have a simple statement I would like to make
Sure.
to the commissioners. Comes down to the
If you don't mind, let me just introduce who you are, why come on up if you'd like to.
No, I'm, I'm fine right here.
Leslie, I talked on the phone the other day, he's a vendor that has purchased a business, he's operated about seven years, that business has been in for some time, and he had the handmade exemption in the past, and now we know we've restricted that to just the really small, it was intended for the really small handmade people, not people like me that make more than a few hundred dollars worth of stuff. And so he called about that, because he had talked with the, with John with TML, and had been denied. We had that conversation, that how it comes down, just so everybody kicking in, and then that's why he started a day, then he has a comment on that, so go ahead, sir, you're on.
So basically, this is all just my opinion, and some folks that I've talked to in Park County that lives in Park County year-round, that do handcrafted items. I don't know what the numbers are, I don't know how much money the county's gonna lose on TMLs to cover the cost of things that should have already been budgeted in, including deputies, EMS is a little bit different story. But if it's a couple thousand dollars, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the numbers are. Like I said, I feel as a lifelong resident of Park County, born and raised in Mansfield, I've driven my whole life. I took over doing this seven years ago from a guy that set in my front yard since I was a kid growing up, done it for thirty-three years, and every year, he's from Missouri, he didn't get the exemption, he got the process EPO is waived, but he never got the full exemption. He actually trained the woodcarver that set up at Bridgeton, you would know him, Dan.
Which one?
Um, he's set up by the middle of their area. I, I've lived in Mansfield my whole life, the last forty years, I, I've not even had time, I can't even go walk around anymore.
I understand.
So, I mean, it's just a nightmare. I find it hard to justify a resident paying property taxes, will surface tax. I don't work in Park County, I work in another county, it took him three years to figure out my payroll because of the income tax, property for Park County as opposed to all the other county taxes. I've been doing about twelve shows a year. With that being said, that's twelve different counties. This is the highest county for a fee that I gotta pay for. Now granted, I get my spot for free because I'm in my front yard. For a commissioner to tell me ultimately you don't have to get a TML, and that's true, ultimately I don't, if I wanna pay a fine, or take a chance and set you in jail according to the state laws. I don't believe that's right.
Well, that part's not accurate. If that's where your business is, on your retail merchant certificate, if that's your address, you don't have to have a TML. TML is only for businesses that go someplace other than their address on their, on their retail merchant certificate.
So my retail merchant certificate that I've got through the state of Indiana, because I've asked this question, because that's another thing I couldn't understand, that why am I paying for this and still having to pay Park County for a TML?
You should, should, no. Nope, and I said that the day we talked. If it's at your residence, you don't have to get a TML. A TML is transient merchant, if you're setting a business someplace else other than the address on your retail merchant, then you have to have one. If it's the address of your, of your retail merchant, you don't have to get one.
So therefore, I don't get a TML.
If your, if your retail merchant certificate has that location as its address, then you do not.
Now, it was clarified.
Anybody that sets up on you has to have one.
Exactly, yes.
My wife has a store in Bridgeton, she has a license saying she, she does not have to have one, but I set up on someone else, so I have to have one, so I pay for it, even though for years, everything I done was just chainsaw carving, it was all handmade, but I
With my maple syrup, I don't have to have one to sell at my house, but if I go to the fairgrounds, I have to get a TML to sell maple syrup at the fairgrounds.
And again, to, like I said, to everybody, I'm not here to debate, I, I don't feel it's right as a resident, I'm like I said, I don't know the numbers, you guys would know the numbers better than I do, of how much we would actually lose as a county on TMLs to give somebody that benefit, because if you do hand carve stuff, handwork, handmade, handcrafted, whatever, you guys know as well as I do, the pain and the agony and the time.
I, I don't think though that's the whole problem that we've discussed. It's not that no one can have a handmade exemption, it's just, there's a whole bunch of them out there that do one little thing handmade, and everything else they drag out is gobs of other stuff. So they're taking an advantage of people that do the handmade, and ultimately, it's up to the auditor to decide with you.
And that, and that is another point that I would like to stress, is that it stays in the ordinance. You claim to be handmade, it's that item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not the potholders plus the pots of paint.
That's right, and that's, and that's the difficulty. The biggest difficulty was, what it was created for, as we talked on the phone that day, it was created for those little mom and pops who had made a few hundred dollars worth of stuff a year, and that's what the festival was created for. It's grown way beyond that, and other people like me, who just, no matter how big you were, how much stuff you sold, were covered by that, and that was never the intention of it, but it had been allowed over all those years to happen to that, and I want to take that back if we can, and get back what it was intended for. If it was an exorbitant fee of a thousand bucks, that'd be a different issue, but ten dollars a day, I think it's not a bad thing to pay for. We, we talked also that there are no tax dollars that go into promoting this Cover Bridge Festival, so if, if the vendors, the people who benefit from it don't pay for it, I don't know who would pay to put the festival on, because it's not taxpayers paying for that. Taxpayers pay for the normal police coverage, normal ambulance coverage, but all the extra has to come from somewhere, and I don't think that taxpayers who don't benefit from that, because the county makes nothing off the Cover Bridge Festival, they collect the TMLs, and that goes to paying for, for the festival, for the extra, extra costs on that.
And again, that, like I said, I'm not here for
I understand, yeah.
My point being is that, so I did have an auditor come up to me last year and ask me what were TMLs, and I totally didn't have to have one. Yes, you do.
They were all new last year.
Yeah, they were just wrong.
I showed her my retail merchant, I showed her my driver's license.
You were, you were right.
I said, if you walk around my booth, that's my house right there.
That person was wrong.
And year before that, I had the same problem. Year before that, they called one of you guys.
Well, we need to make sure we confirm that with the new people that are training to do that.
I think it really needs, if, if we're gonna go to the point where you gotta show how much money you made, or whatever the case be, or if you're gonna pass this ordinance, then the auditor should step up and do their job as well.
I agree, that was, they were wrong, no, no question about that.
Like I said, they were all brand new, and
I know.
they're gonna make mistakes for a year.
I was new once too.
And that's why I encourage you, just like you did, and I, and I called you. If you got a question, just, just ask, just call somebody.
It is very easy, and this is in my eyes, like I said, this is me, this is not for everybody, to walk in, and if you got thirty quilts sitting there, those weren't handmade.
Absolutely.
You're not gonna make thirty quilts a year.
Yep, I agree.
If they're hand-stitched, you ain't making them.
And that's why we tried to put some kind of number to it, so if you're making that many, you sold that much, you're not entitled to it.
The auditors have all the deputy auditors, and I saw them numerous in Mansfield, walking up and down the road, doing what they're supposed to do, other than, I think it could be addressed a little bit better. I don't think the residents that live here year-round, now, if, if Tom Jerry over here has a piece of the lake, or whatever, and he's there ten days out of year, it's understandable, he's not living there year-round.
Right. Yeah.
Residents like us, I mean, we, my family has been here
And that's why.
since eighteen-twenty-two.
And that's why it's like that, you're here, you shouldn't have to pay that, and you don't.
And that's just something I firmly believe that it needs to get away from, let's make these people pay more money than they already are.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I've got.
I appreciate it, thanks for coming in. Yes, sir. Something for you? You're just looking. Okay, anybody else got anything? Is there a motion?
Motion, adjourn.
I'll second that.
You're adjourned. We adjourn.